That's.
Sit away.
Hey, we'd like to welcome everyone today and call to order the study meeting of the West Valley City Council is February 27, 2024, beginning the meeting at 4:30 PM in the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. We have. Councilman Hune is not here right this minute. We are joined by Councilman Norfelt, Councilman, It's Umanu, Councilman Whitstone, Councilman Harmon, Council Kristerson, myself. We're also joined at the table with our interim assistant city manager, Mr. Flores, and our city recorder, Ms. Kamic. We have our minutes of February 20th, 2024. Turn it to the council for discussion on our motion.
Move to approve those minutes.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those stand approved. We have our meeting for this evening. Do you have any questions or any changes, Mr. Flores?
We have one change. We added the appointment of Efo Peely as the city manager.
Thank you. Did anybody have any questions or for this evening's meeting? Okay, thank you. We'll now go to our resolutions. Our first one is Resolution 24-37. I'll turn the time to Mr. Flores.
Yep, I will just add briefly. This is a resolution to appoint Efo Peely as city manager. We went through our extensive recruitment and hiring process and after interviews and lots of discussion, council decided to move forward with Efo Peely and we're very excited about it. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to Resolution 24-38 and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Erickson for that presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jason Erickson, Parks and Recreation. So, yes, so this this issue is regarding a grant that our fantastic forester applies for every year. This year, they got some additional monies from the US Forest Service to be able to increase the size and award of this grant. And so so we were able to apply for these funds for the, as you can see there, for the removal of trees and also it also covers the purchase of new trees to replant in their place. As you can see, sometimes, and you've probably seen them in some of the parks, sometimes it becomes necessary to remove trees. We do not like to remove trees, but sometimes it just becomes necessary to do that because of the health of the trees and and also to open up the canopy and allow maybe a little better variety to grow up that's underneath them. So, so, so that's what this, so that's what this grant is for is to is to remove, grind down the stumps, and then purchase new trees to be planted.
Okay. Any questions from the council for Mr. Erickson? Yes.
Just a question on some of the requirements. I noticed in the agreement it said that the project work seems to be in a federally designated disadvantaged area. Does that sort of restrict on where the trees can go or?
Correct. Yes. So basically, it kind of goes along the CDBG guidelines with that. And so Darren looked at, looked at the kind of the CDBG boundary areas and, and the, you know, low income areas, and that's, that's where we're removing the trees from us, from those areas, the parks and those parks and other areas and those areas.
We can just, we have to make sure that it's designated.
Correct.
Seeing no other, no other questions, we'll move to Resolution 24-39. Mr. Erickson.
Yeah. So this, so this is actually the awarding of the tree removal that we paid for by this grant. As you can see, we, we went to a formal bid process. We actually had seven, seven responders, which was, which was fantastic. You can see that it was kind of interesting that they ranged in price from just, you know, 59,600 to 119,000. So for the, for the same tree. So it's, it's kind of interesting. But, but yeah, so so with that, the low, the low bid was Horticultural Group Incorporated, and we would recommend to award the bid to them.
Okay. Any questions?
Have we used them in the past?
We have not used them in the past. I do believe they're a fairly new company. The, the guy that's the main guy that's, that's part of that, his name's Eric Behun, and he is a, somebody that we dealt with with Parks and Recreation before and Parks Maintenance. And so we have some familiarity with him, and so we feel pretty confident with that.
So the grant was 85.
Correct.
This contract's 60.
Yes, sir.
The other 25 is.
To purchase the new trees. Yes, sir.
Perfect.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll now go to our consent agenda. I will turn the time to Mr. Flores and Mr. Johnson if there's any questions. They seem to be pretty generic. Okay, seeing no concerns, we'll go to our communication. I will turn the time over to Courtney Flint with Utah State University for our well-being survey.
Hello, I'm Courtney Flint. I'm a professor at Utah State University in the Department of Environment Society, and I am the director of the Utah Wellbeing Project. And super excited to have West Valley City as a new partner this year in the project. So I will just great, share a couple of things with you. Give you an overview of what this project looks like for you in terms of West Valley City's participation. But overall, you know, USU is the land-grant university. And so first and foremost, the goal, primary goal of this is to provide cities with information on the well-being and of their residents and help you keep a finger on the pulse of their concerns and their perspectives. And when we'll bring that to you in this partnership. Of course, we are also doing research, comparative research across the communities on, about well-being. And we're increasingly partnering with statewide initiatives like with UDOT's TravelWise program, with Get Healthy Utah, with other initiatives. And so we are working to make sure that the data come up and support and inform those initiatives and that the resources and the information that, that can be helpful come back down to the cities. So we have 44 partners this year, more than we've ever had since 2019. That will, 44 cities that will be launching surveys this year. You can see on the map there everywhere from the very smallest towns in Utah to some of the largest cities such as yourself. So it really cuts across the board. We work very hard to make sure we're comparing apples and apples and oranges and oranges when we, when we present and compare the data. So that we're not presenting, you know, comparing West Valley City with Blanding, for example. So we, we work hard to make that, those distinctions clear. We have since 2019 collected over 25,000 surveys from residents across the state in various communities. And again, that's a total of 60 total cities we've worked with and very happy to have West Valley City involved. So the West Valley City Wellbeing Survey is going to launch fairly soon. Everything's ready onboard for you guys to just launch. When it works well for you guys, the survey will likely launch very soon and then run through the month of, of March, if I'm correct on our plan. If we need to run into April a little bit, that's just fine. The, the window for surveys is sort of this March-April window. We'll, we won't want to pester everyone for months about this. So we'll want to, we'll want to have a nice window and then we'll, we'll get as much data as we can. How does the Wellbeing Survey work? Well, it's an online survey. We have it in English and in Spanish. We wish that we had unlimited funds to translate into many more languages. We did look into that this year and maybe in future years we'll be able to do that. We developed the survey, we handled the survey administration, and we will handle the reporting and the analysis, the analysis and the reporting back to you and so forth. In the partnership, the city handles the advertising. So getting the word out, we feel cities each know best how to reach their residents. And so we'll tap into that capacity. We will turn around. We've automated our analysis. We should have reports available for you in just a couple of months. I'm happy to come back and present to your council on the findings if you wish. We do put all of the reports on our website there. And this is a generally a no-cost partnership for cities. We don't want cost to ever be a barrier. We are grateful for the contributions and we are very grateful for West Valley City's contributions towards this, this effort. And that makes a big difference as we support students and their work with me. So we will advertise in a variety of modes. We'll use social media, your Nextdoor app, your city website, posters in city and community buildings, perhaps other mechanisms that emerge. And then we, we really do hope that you, as city council people and the staff in the city will help spread the word as well and reach your various constituents. We will provide reports on the, how the, how the responses are going. This year, we're tracking responses by the mode of advertising. So we're going to be able to tell you kind of what's, where are you getting more bang for your buck in your advertising. So this is just an example here. This is Orem's first five days. You can see that they came right out of the gates with over 600, actually has, actually turned out to be almost more than 800 in their first 24 hours. Once you think about all of the different responses cumulatively. And so lots from their newsletter, but it tapers off quickly. So coming back and reinforcing that with social media and so forth is, is really important. And we'll work with your team here to, to carry this out systematically. The questions cover a variety of areas, cover our personal well-being, community well-being. Community connectedness has been a very important variable, barely tied to mental health and overall well-being. We break well-being down into a variety of categories. These are on the right here. We ask people to rate them and say how important they are to them. We'll provide you with a matrix of all of that. So you can track these different areas for your community. A couple other help, active are people in recreation and other activities, perspectives on population and economic growth. We don't need to read through all of these, but there are some newer areas in terms of transportation this year from UDOT. We'll have some open comments. We'll share all those raw comments with you, just coordinated by category. We will have some specific questions for West Valley City related to trails, childcare, legal resources. And so we'll be able to add those, that additional focus just for you. We work to try to provide resources that line up with sort of critical areas that emerge for every, for any given city. Something seems to be pretty critical. We try to connect with other resources, extension programming and so forth to try to share and share across cities. Other cities may have something that could be helpful. You may have experience with something that other cities can find helpful. And with that, it's just a short, brief overview to give you a sense of what's coming. I am grateful to you for being a partner and for your financial support of the project. And if you have any questions, I'd be very happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions?
Any questions or how long does it take a resident to?
It's going to be plus or minus about 10 minutes. Depends on how lengthy they get with their open-ended answers. We are looking at the data now that's coming in and we're seeing as few as six or seven minutes. A lot probably in that 12-minute range, and then some people will be a little closer to 20, but rarely do we see anyone beyond that. So we say plus or minus 10 minutes and right about in that range. There are a lot of questions, but they flow pretty quickly. Anything else?
So I guess, I don't know why this keeps coming to my brain, but there's different appointments I go to that have worksheets kind of like this. Is there any concern with food insecurity?
We do have some questions about concerns about access to quality and affordable food. And we have, I think there's another question in the concerns about food. So we will have a few things there. We also have, you know, asking about how people access serve their travel to get groceries and things like that. So, but the other thing is, is that if it's critical issues, it may well come up in the open-ended comments, and then we'll distill those for you so that you can see those as well. So sometimes we have specific questions, and then sometimes things come up a little bit organically, and we will provide you with both.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
The US Census just released a study showing and it drilled down to census tracts, that, that community or that census tract's ability to overcome natural disasters. So whether, so earthquake or pandemic, but they sort of ranked those census tracts and then identified the resiliency of that particular committee. Is that something this study also looks at?
I don't think we're looking here at an intersection with natural disasters, but one of the things that we, we can and will continue to do is compare our findings, kind of put them side to side with the Utah Healthy Places Index, which is kind of getting at some, sometimes some levels of resilience sort of tracking. And we'll be able to sort of show how the concerns and the rankings of these different domains compare with these more objective indicators of the community. Not necessarily am I going to sort of say that's going to make this area more or less resilient. That probably would be another indirect kind of conclusion. But we will give you some data. Forgive me, Alex, are we, do we have a map for people to indicate where in the community they are as part of your survey? Just zip code. So we will be able to break down by zip codes for you within West Valley City, a few of those different areas. But we're not getting down into the tract level, so we won't be directly in align with that, with that article. We do, however, have a list of concerns, and among them include, you know, water supply, water quality, air quality, other sorts of sort of environmental concerns as well, but not so much about natural disasters per se.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your time and I look forward to working with you and hopefully coming back to share some of the findings with you in the summer.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a legislative update and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Hill.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. It's, it's good to be back. We've, obviously, this is the last week of the session, and so things are happening pretty fast. I said I would come here with some good news, so I'm going to start you with some bad news. So let's talk about the entertainment district. It is dead, and it will not happen. The, the concept here in, in theory could have maybe offered an opportunity to do something around the Maverick Center to do an entertainment district and have some potential revenue associated with that. Ultimately, what ended up happening there is leadership in both chambers determined that the way they were going to go is NBA, NHL only, downtown Salt Lake City Arena only, and absolutely nothing else. And so that will not be happening. There is better news elsewhere on the front, so we always start with the bad news, I suppose. And so it looks like one of the hot issues this week has been obviously homelessness as it often is. And it looks like the odds are promising for the state to contribute some additional mitigation money that would maybe be in an on, on an ongoing basis, but it looks very good, at least for one-time money. And so that would be kind of matching what cities have been contributing into that mitigation fund. And that's been essential for us to fund the additional police and fire shifts and things of that nature that have come up around our overflow shelter. And so it's good to see that that remains on the docket there. Probably the single bill that is drawing the most attention this week from the city point of view is SB 185, which is a building inspection bill. This is something we're lobbying very hard. It's a bill that would, in its current form, allow developers to essentially choose who their building inspector is. And so the potential problems with this approach are legion, but you know, the best analogy I've heard so far today is that you get pulled over for speeding, and then you get to dial 911 and pick your favorite deputy to come out and decide whether to give you a ticket or not. Now, you can imagine as a city what our position might be about something like that. And so so there, we are opposed to that bill, and so we'll be doing some outreach with our legislators and have done that. And the odds look promising to either amend that bill into a more reasonable form or to see it defeated. Other than that, the biggest mission this week has just been building connections with our legislators and getting out there and talking with our senators and representatives and some of them haven't heard a whole lot from us in a little while, and so we're getting that fixed. And, and so this week has been a lot of reintroducing to some old friends and making as many new friends as I possibly can. And so that's been really great. We've got a really good delegation of senators and representatives from West Valley. They're good people that care about our side of town. And as the session wraps up and going into the interim, we're going to be working really hard to build those relationships. And what we'd really love to see is to see those folks in a more active dialogue with you as the council. The mayor's been great talking with folks this week. And, and we'd like to see by this time next session that we've got a really cohesive group of people who, whether they're Republicans, Democrats, what have you, that understand they represent West Valley and represent our people, and that we've got concerns out here. And we, and the message we've heard overwhelmingly is they want to hear more from us and they, and they've been very welcoming. And so any questions about any of that or anything else that's going on in the Capitol? All right, and please reach out. We're working these things daily and we'll be back with an update as the session ends to let you know how the body count stacked up. And so we will get that done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I have to acknowledge Brendan has stepped in and done a wonderful job. So thank you so much. Okay, we will go to our community development fee schedule. Mr. Pastrick.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two items under fees. The first one has to do with our land use application fees. So council probably knows we have subdivisions, conditional uses, zone changes that we charge fees for currently. Those fees have been in place for the most part since 2000, so about 24 years now. And we'd like to make some adjustments there to reflect more just the staff time involved in those and just current costs. So before we actually bring something to you officially, we just, the first question was just if you're okay with us making some adjustments there. So that's the, that's the first question.
Probably.
Well, the fact that you're saying it'll bring it into line to what our true costs are, definitely. Yeah.
Great. The next one is a little bit more involved, and that's relating to impact fees. So it hasn't, it's not been nearly as long for impact fees. So the council probably knows we charge impact fees for parks, police, fire, roads, and stormwater. And really, the, the point there is that as new development happens, it's fees that are paid to help offset sort of the impact of those developments. So, for example, if you have a new residential development, the new people living in that development create the demand for more park space, so they're paying into, to fees to help build new parks. So our last update was in 2021, which was not that long ago, but a couple of things with that. So when we do those, it does take quite a bit of time to go through all the, the data. And so the, the data used for the, that study that was ultimately updated in 21 was from 2019 and 2020. Well, what's happened over the last several years is massive inflation, right? And so the fees that we're collecting now based on, you know, dollar figures from 19 and 20, you've seen, you know, in some cases near double-digit inflation. So the first request to update the impact fees will just be to try to capture current costs, given just inflation. The second part, and this gets a little bit more into the weeds, is, is to account for recent improvements that have been done. So when we, we go through the analysis, and we actually would hire a consultant for this, as we've done in the past. We take an inventory of all the existing infrastructure and then compare that to the current population. So it's again, just trying to give a snapshot of here's all the improvements versus our population, and here's our level of service. So whenever you update the impact fees, you have to sort of reevaluate your level of service based on current population improvements that are in the city. So the request here, and again, we don't have a contract. We wanted to make sure council's comfortable before we have a conversation with a consultant about a contract would be to get with a consultant and prepare a contract for the council's consideration. The dollar amount, we've, we've talked with the consultant, would be probably in the $80,000 to $90,000 range. We can use, we can actually use existing or already collected impact fees to pay for that study. So this isn't something that's coming from general fund. So state law does allow us to use them, impact fees already collected to pay for the study. And just to give you an idea of the significance of this revenue source. So last fiscal year, we brought in about $2.4 million in impact fees. So, so while it does cost a little bit to, to update the study, we feel like it is worth the change, given just the amount of money we do collect from these fees. So, second question is, the council's okay with us to prepare a contract for your consideration to update the impact fees?
Are there any concerns with hiring a contractor? Or consultant? Consultant.
Would this study result in maybe our services are lacking here or we're doing their service? I don't know what it could produce, but would it potentially show? Or what, what kind of outcome?
So the impact fee analysis can't cure what we call existing deficiencies. So if, if our level of service in a particular service is already low, we can't use impact fees to increase the level of service. The, the state law limits us to just maintain our level of service. So if we want to say improve the city's level of service beyond what it is currently, then we have to find some other revenue source to do that.
But with the, I think what you're saying is, will the report show where we're maybe deficient in some of those areas?
It, it can. It just, again, that in terms of the, the, how the funds are used, we just can't, we can't fix those gaps with impact fees if, if there's an existing gap.
So the study is to determine what changes we should make to impact fees. Those sort of things are not considerations for.
So what, in order to determine what the fees will be, we first have to evaluate what our current level of service is. So that, that's looking at all, for example, parks, if you look at all the existing park improvements, and we compare that with, okay, here's our population. So if, as the population grows, and we want to maintain that same level of park service, we need to build, let's say, three we need to build, let's say, three or four new parks, as an example. But it, but it can't say, well, you know, compared to city Y, we were short this many parks. So therefore we need to, we can't use impact fees to, to bring our level of service up beyond what it is right now.
So would it give us an idea as well of what the impact would be to services for maybe high density compared to single family? And that we need a bigger park for this situation or a smaller park for this, or more police service or less police service?
So typically what it looks at there on the park side would be population. So generally speaking, in an apartment building, for example, you'd have fewer residents per unit than you would say a single-family detached home. So that's mainly what they're looking at there is the presence of people. How, how many people this development generate?
Okay.
Sounds like a thumbs up.
Yep. Oh, yeah.
I'm just, it bothers me that we did this three years ago. And we're doing, are you spending that money again right now? Is there anything we can do to make it more longer lasting?
That's a great question. As I've talked with legal before about this, we, we can't inflation adjust impact fees. So we, whenever we, whenever we want to adopt new impact fees, we do have to kind of go back through that analysis.
And is that state law?
Yes. Yeah, they're, over the years, the, the requirements on cities for impact fees have only gotten more stringent. Or there's quite a bit of analysis that goes into that.
And I don't see any other questions, so we'll move to our next communication item, the development agreement discussion, Mr. Pastrick.
Thank you. So on occasion, we get requests from developers when they're looking at either purchasing a property or one that they themselves are already entitled to amend a development agreement that's already been approved by the city. And under, under Mr. Powell, our, our policy on that has been that first I would look at what they're proposing to change and, and look at and say, okay, is what they're requesting at least, at least as good or better than what we already had in our agreement? If it wasn't, I'd say, sorry, we're just like, this isn't something we're going to, you know, bring to the level of the council. If I felt like it was something that was at least equivalent or better, I'd review that with the city manager. If he agreed, then we would place it on the council's agenda. So that was kind of our, our policy. We had one developer that sort of broke rank on that issue. And not at our suggestion, but just came to council in a, in a study or in a regular meeting on the public comment period and said, hey, I'd like to change my development agreement. And ultimately, and of course, the council, that's your discretion, just chose to make that change. And so we're really just looking for some direction as we have people come to us and say, hey, I'm interested in making a change. If you'd like to us to stick with kind of the process we've been doing, or if you, if you want us to bring those to you regardless of what it is they're asking for, just, just looking for some direction on what your preference would be.
So the gentleman that came to public hearing, was that the development of around 3,200?
Yes.
Okay.
And had they approached you already with the change and they said?
We, we said, and, and what we looked at in that situation was we felt like the, the cost of the, the items that they were wanting to no longer do was far greater than what they were providing as a substitute. So we thought, you know what, that's, we don't feel like we're getting equal value here, which, again, but maybe that's the wrong yardstick. And so that's why we're, we're asking the, the question.
So for myself personally, I like the original plan. And I think we just need a better discussion if somebody brings it up in public hearing that you're honest with us and just says, we've already told them no. Because I know you're very neutral when you present to us, and we might need you to just tell us the full story and be a little bit more open with what the background was.
We can absolutely do that.
Because I didn't realize I'd already come to you and you'd said, nah, we're okay.
Yeah, and we, and that's, that's on us. We, we had thought that maybe that was just a priority for the council to make the change. And so we, we didn't get into the weeds on it, but next time we'll get into the weeds.
Yeah, I don't think we can make a good decision without having all the facts. So I think you giving us all the facts is, in the future will be helpful.
Okay, absolutely.
But yeah, I'd rather have them go through the proper channels and not try to go around staff to get what they want.
Great, that's what we'll do.
Everybody good with that? And the Steve Pastrick Show continues. Okay, we'll go to our general plan update.
Great, thank you. So I'll share my screen. So this is a continuation of, we've done over a couple of weeks now. So this next section we're looking at is, is 35th South between 5600 West and Bangator Highway. So we'll be looking at several properties. And again, would love the council's input as we look at what our consultant, you know, considered as options. And of course, as always, if you, if you have or ideas that differ from what the consultant came up with, we're certainly open to that. So what I'm sharing here is the PowerPoint. There are a couple of PDF maps included in your packet, just for reference. Those show the types of businesses that are, that exist along this stretch of 35th, as well as some of the, the schools and parks in the area, again, just for reference. So the first one here is, so starting on the west end, these are some, I call some remnant parcels left over from when UDOT widened 35th. Part of the Mountain View Quarter project. Now, in, in a couple of instances, I'll point out here, the consultant didn't have the benefit of some of the latest information, just because this was done some time ago. So the property on the west side of the road, so on the west side of 56, on south side of 35th, was acquired by Dominion Energy. And so they actually came to planning commission to install a utility installation there, but then have decided to postpone that. So, excuse me, most likely that property in the west side will, will be some type of Dominion Energy utility, a facility there. And then the one on the, the east side of 5600 West, just given the size by itself, really, in our view, doesn't make sense for townhomes. So we feel like the, probably the best use on that east side is if that could be either absorbed as part of the Arby's or maybe as we look at the property next door, combined with a neighboring property for commercial use. So this one, just given the, the ownership changes, since this was looked at by the consultant, kind of locked us in already. So again, just a couple of pictures here, you can see it's just, it's just all vacant right now. Just again, a couple more pictures. So before we move to the next one, any comments on that one? Again, that one seems pretty straightforward, just given some of the changes recently.
How large is the piece on the east side?
Oh, that one's probably under half an acre. So this next one is, so just, just to the east, this one's owned by UTA. And to say this parking ride lot was oversized is an understatement. Yeah, it's never been fully occupied. And so the consultant looked at this as a possibility of commercial and townhomes, basically the same for both, both scenarios. And so I, I don't know that UTA would want to, to give up all of that space. So most likely, if they were to give up some, they'd probably want to retain the, the, the space closest to the street, just for, for the transit patrons. So from that perspective, what the, what the planning commission was thinking is if the south portion of the property were, were to go to townhomes, similar to what was done on the east and south side of the roads, that would make sense here. So that was the planning commission's thought, but comments on this one?
Any thoughts?
There's already a lot of housing right there. I'd be, I'd be more commercial for that.
Is there a difference between option A and B?
In this case, there's not. Yeah, they, they did the same on both.
It's a trick.
Yeah.
See if you're paying attention.
When you put the same answer on the test.
I'd like that as a multiple choice question on the test.
I think that works well.
So commercial was one, one thought, okay? So again, just some pictures here, of course, you're from there, you can, the parking ride lot here, and you see the towns in the distance. So this next one, a little trickier, you've got several different parcels here. So you've got some homes and you've got some commercial uses more towards the west end. And in the options here, we're looking at single-family homes. We do have the, kind of the stub street to the north end of the property or, or some townhomes that, again, where you have the frontage on 35th South. Some pictures here, so the one on the left is looking from 35th. The one on the right is looking actually from the stub street, so that's looking south from the stub. That's the last, so thoughts on this one? I think part, part of the challenge, at least for single-family, in this case, is on the, on those parcels more towards the west end, that might be tougher to do on the commercial pieces.
Would you like option A though? Who's taking the question? So 35th will eventually be lane added.
Correct, right. So the, the plan, long-term plan for the region is that it would be widened basically to Mountain View Quarter. So from Bangator to Mountain View would all be essentially seven lanes.
Then that stub street that's dead end and right there by Sunshine. Is that, would that be allowed to go through or is it too close to 5450? Have another, another entrance on 35th?
Just, just eyeballing it, I think that's something that would be possible. Ultimately, that's something UDOT could have some access controls, meaning limiting left turns. So I could see them, you know, allowing a connection, but there, there's a possibility that maybe there's limitations of left turns.
I would think if we were, if it were single-family homes, it would be better to not have access and have, you know, backyards on 35th.
Yeah, great.
So you should have the access from Sunshine and rather than the, you know, stub street.
Yeah, we've seen both. In fact, if you look in this, this zoomed out image, the property to the east actually has homes facing 35th, and that's relatively new because there's no other option. This one on the east of that, there's a cul-de-sac with, you know, connection from a side street, and then the backyards are up against 35th. So, yeah, we've seen both. So it sounds like option A on this one.
So just a quick question on the one with the cul-de-sac. Is the setback where the future road will be, so the road won't take any of those people's backyards?
Right, so it's a little bit tough to see in these, these images, but you'll notice this red line and then the property line here is here. So we did get right-of-way dedication on both of those projects to account for future widening.
So we would do that on this project as well?
Right.
So there's no going back?
All right, so here's another somewhat similar, that you have a, a collection of individual properties that all front on 35th. There's a couple here that are very, very deep, but most of them are maybe a couple hundred feet deep. You do have, this is the, the meat, Hunt Saker meats that's out in the road, which fortunately that's going away. So that's, finally got that, so you don't have to run out into the road to avoid the building. So in this case, the consultant looked at a blend of, so for the first option, it's commercial, some single-family homes, which would be on this kind of south portion of the property that has the stub street. And then some townhomes mixed in versus just doing, again, the single-family on the south portion with townhomes along all of the frontage, were the two options here. And then just looking at some of the pictures, the Hunt Saker meat on the left, and then just some of the homes that front along the street there. And then this image on the right is from the stub street. So this is kind of more looking at that south portion of the property that extends farther to the, to the south.
So the next lots to the west seem to be pretty vacant as well. They didn't study that with the?
So, meaning just out?
The tree line. Yeah.
Yeah, I think it, it's partly because of the, the, just the, some of the struggles with the access.
Okay.
It might be possible to get a road to kind of meander through there to connect, but it'd be challenging.
I just don't know how that will ever be developed if we landlock it with this.
It's just stub street coming from the side.
Here? I'm talking this vacant right here.
What's the? Not in the study area.
No, that's why I was asking why it didn't get put in with the study area. Especially with how deep that is. I like the idea of single-family homes in there.
Yeah, I was, I like option A, but if we could maybe put a little more single-family home side and?
Yeah, I'd rather not have the townhomes, just do the commercial on 35th and then single-family back in there. Is far enough off, you won't, or off of 35th, the noise in that isn't going to be as bad. We're running out of space for single-family homes.
So our next one is smaller, so moving east, 5190 West. So in this case, you have, it's a little awkward if you look at the connections, you've got this stub street, but it just happens to be kind of in that northern tip, so it's hard to connect. And then you have another cul-de-sac slash stub street on the east side. So two options here, a mix of single-family and townhomes or, or townhomes. And then here's just a, a couple of, of images. So one, you can see the, one of the homes on the left there.
Did they ever, I thought they asked for a permit to put a house behind that red brick house. Did we ever let them do that?
I don't think so. I, I have to look that up, but I, that's, that doesn't ring a bell for me.
It seems like it came through sometime, but I don't remember what happened with that.
Talk about sidewalk improvements in front of that.
And that got approved, didn't it? With the safe sidewalk monies? With safe walking routes or something? I think it's already done, isn't it? Yeah, because there was a stormwater and the sidewalk, so I think it's already done. Again, I'd rather just go single-family homes.
So this one, again, this is another example where the consultant didn't have the benefit of a recent change. So this is one the council may recall where. This is one the council may recall where most of this was reason for like a twin type development. And so you know, in light of that, I think that maybe changes the the options here. The commercial at this point, I think, is probably off the table, given that most of the frontage on thirty fifth will now be this other development. Just getting some pictures. These should look familiar in that we looked at this not a month ago. You have the one on the left is the property that did get rezoned and then the homes on the right are ones that are working zone, but are right there on thirty fifth south. And then this is the Kiowa Way on the right hand side. And go back to this one. One, one option here would be to continue or just extend what was at least to the south, what was already approved. Because there will be a stub street in the project that the council approved. And so that could just be extended to the south. The piece right on thirty fifth, this one here would be kind of a standalone because there there was not a connection this direction.
I think for what's going to be leftover, I agree with you, Tom.
I'm seeing a trend. All right. So another, this is another smaller one. So you've got just several homes that with a little bit of an awkward shape on that western piece with the kind of the tail there. You've got, there is one duplex, so two homes of one duplex. It's the one on the the right. So you do have a commercial building to the east of that. That's this, it's relatively new. So that's a commercial building here. And then also east is a townhome development here that has access along this this side street. So just again, some of the duplex there on the left and then the homes there on the right. And then the options here were all commercial or all townhomes under under this proposal or under these options.
Either way, I think with the little leg. Probably going to be more commercial than if you do townhomes. I don't know what that would be. Maybe a playground.
Yeah, I think commercial would pick up there as well.
All right, another another one just to the east. So here again, you have several homes that front right on thirty fifth that are have deep lots. And so, you know, if these were assembled. The you have about two and a half acres. So again, the the choices here were just all commercial or all townhomes similar to what was done on the west side of the of the, I think it's Little What Street. And again, just some pictures of the the ones on the the image on the left are the homes on thirty fifth. And this is the side street. So looking from that street on the west side.
And just to the east is the storage units?
Correct. Yeah, there's there's some commercial kind of in the front of the storage units and the storage units in the back.
If it was townhomes, would they access forty nine sixty, you think?
They could do either, right? In the case of the townhomes on the west side, that's what they did. But in this case, you know, you could even have an L shaped street that goes through it, or you could have all of the access off of the the side street and and not have access on thirty fifth. So.
That intersection gets a little crazy when school gets out of a center cat. It's a descent or no, it's the. Up to turn lot at that.
So do you think commercial would work better or townhomes there? You're very familiar with that area.
I actually don't see it being compiled. I mean.
Yeah, we we have had people call about these individually and it's really it's really tough to do something with just one piece by itself because there's just not enough, not on the front edge really to do something.
I mean, that second one and looks like it's barely wide enough for the house that's on it.
Some of these are brain teasers, I know.
Either way.
I think if the townhomes were just the same height as the ones across the street. I'd be a lot more comfortable than the ones that are a lot taller. Extra story on them.
And this would have to be would have to be rezoned. So that's something that could be, you know, discussed as part of a development agreements to limit the height. All right. So this one's a little unusual. So this building used to be, or the building in the in the back used to be ShopCo. This is and then Esperanza is this building right over here. When ShopCo moved out, we had Fetzer's purchased this and now they use it as essentially a warehouse. And so, you know, going from a retail use that requires lots of parking to a warehouse, which requires a fraction of the parking. That's the reason why this was identified is just that Fetzer's just doesn't need that large parking lot. So this one was a little different that the consultant had either industrial, which is again, kind of matching the the Fetzer's use for townhomes. In this case, the planning commission actually thought maybe commercial could work where you could have maybe like a a strip commercial building kind of in and behind the pad sites. But that was their that was their thought.
Yeah, I think commercial as well, especially with that school and the traffic problems.
Is there anything that could be done in this area to alleviate Esperanza and the congestion it causes on thirty fifth? I don't know if you could create a.
Do you have a cross access agreement or something?
This is probably a, I should probably reserve this comment, but I'll I'll say it anyway. If the state would allow us to regulate charter schools, then we could do something about it, but they don't. And so we, if if we would, you would definitely look at their site plan and and provide lots of stacking and ways for things to circulate. But because we can't do that, it's we end up with these problems. But it's the the state just doesn't allow us to regulate it. And so, in fact, I experienced this the other day as I was driving west on thirty fifth. There's people stacked out on thirty fifth south waiting to turn in.
There's also that new that's opening up right there too, and it'll bring traffic. Some not as much as Esperanza. So I think industrial or commercial would work the best in there.
You're all familiar with the warehouse building there.
Or Texas Roadhouse.
I know, really nice. They need that much parking, so.
So this is one where, again, the the consultant didn't have the benefit of some new information. So two of these properties. I'll point out which one. So this this one's an auto repair business. But these two homes here were acquired by Catrachos. It's a a restaurant that's on Redwood Road that's building a new restaurant here. So they acquired those. So those will be, there are two homes that will be demolished. And in fact, I think they're already constructing.
They're gone. The foundation is poured.
And then you've got this old convenience store here, which we've had some conversations about a new commercial use here. So I think pretty much the frontage here will likely all be commercial, assuming that all goes forward. And so the planning commission here had suggested doing single family behind that. So you'd have access off of this street here, which is pretty much option A is what the planning commission was thinking.
So on that gas station, have they taken the tanks out?
I don't know. Yeah, it's at this point, the we we have been having conversations with the use, but they have not formally applied yet. So.
I just didn't know if the tanks were out so that whoever was going to develop it.
Put their signs down.
It's just a big hurdle if the new person has to take the tanks out.
Yeah.
I really like townhomes in this spot. And I know we want more single family, but being right next to the park. Pressured in the park. I think it makes sense to have have a higher density if you've got open space across the street.
So one one limitation with that is, so a number of years ago, the the council changed the code so that in order for a property to be eligible for townhomes. The property had to have access and frontage on a major streets. But if it's all commercial along thirty fifth, that kind of precludes townhomes behind it unless we were to change the code.
Just make forty four a major screen.
So it's it's actually a hundred. You're like, you know, Redwood Road, thirty fifth south, fifty six hundred west, those kinds of streets.
Yeah, I think the option A works well. Yeah. So they said townhomes, but that's because they didn't know about our.
Well, they they had that as option B. I think they were assuming that, you know, depending on how this or this area got redeveloped, you could have an access on thirty fifth. But given what we know now, that's not likely at this point.
Well, not any restaurant. They've developed really, it's going to be quite deep, isn't it?
It will be. It it's fairly, it's fairly narrow. So they do have parking that goes behind the building. But it won't go as far like all the way to the back of the, so they'll they'll have extra space. We have lots of these along thirty fifth where you have in these narrow but deep properties. And in this case, these are mostly commercial. There are a couple of homes kind of mixed in with these. So on the southeast corner of forty four and thirty fifth, wrapping around the the convenience store there. So this one. I'm, it was a little surprised at option A of throwing in some industrial. So commercial and industrial. And option B was commercial and townhomes. Just looking at some pictures, again, you have, you can see some of the commercial uses there along the south side of of thirty fifth.
Across the street, if you wanted to do townhomes there, it's close to the park.
I think we we have done, for what it's worth, we did have another kind of infill townhome project, if you will, that's I think a little bit further to the west. It was next to, it was an old used car lot that was redeveloped into townhomes. So that's just one example that's that's been done on thirty fifth.
Like townhomes better than industrial.
And last but not least is the indoor swap meet. This is the northeast corner of fortieth and thirty fifth. So just under ten acres. Look at a couple of pictures here. This is, this one's more on the north end of the the property. So you have that residential street on the north side of the of this. So this one assumes, of course, redevelopment. And I think the reason, this is the one example for the the ones we're looking at today where they introduce some higher density, some apartments or condos. Just given the building that's already here and just, you know, pretty heavy lift of being able to acquire and demo the building if if that's the desire here.
I know the communities to the north and east are quite high density between there and Bangor. And so I would prefer to stay away from the townhomes and condos. Just because I don't know what the count is, but it's quite high there. That entire area. So I don't know.
That's Skaggs.
Yes, and the old Allied. Yes, my favorite hardware store ever. My kids already know, so I'll share. When I was at my wit's end, I would just go walk through Allied and then go back and make sure they were still alive. Leave them with their dad and just walk away.
There's your happy place.
That was my happy place for a long time. And it left about the same time they became teenagers and I could deal with them a lot better. So. And I don't see a reason why this can't stay all the way commercial. There's a few car dealerships we don't have yet. And there's some other things that could go in there and be totally commercial. Texas Roadhouse again. You could have a really nice restaurant community there. But I think that's, I mean, with how large it is and everything and on thirty fifth, I think it's a great place to do some more upscale commercial.
And that is, that's our last one. So you made it through another another stretch of the road here.
Good job. Any other questions for Steve before his?
He's still.
Do you still have more?
This one, I'm just here for for questions. I don't have a presentation on this one. So.
This is probably because of me. I've been harassing Steve for the last month about boarding houses and group homes and it's it's because people in my neighborhood are not happy with what's going on. So just need to have a little better understanding of what if there's anything we can do to deal with these challenges. So there's probably, well, this is the last month, there's been three houses in our area that have been purchased and then turned into pretty much boarding homes, you know, they've got rooms rented. One of them, the owner actually told the neighbor that, yeah, we're going to rent it out to disabled people. So it's going to be a disabled home, which that sounds, actually, to me, it sounds like probably going to be quiet neighbors for the most part. So it wouldn't be so bad. But Yeah, those that, just having high density in a single family area is one problem. But then what comes with that is and I know this has been talked about in the council over the years is you get ten people living in a house, so probably also means there's twelve cars out front that spread out all along the roads. And so those are probably the two biggest issues with boarding houses is higher density in a single family area and parking issues that the neighbors have to deal with. So.
Oh, yeah, I can maybe provide some some information. I know some of this I I share with you, Councilman Herman. So when it comes to group homes, there there's a distinction between a group home and a boarding home and and maybe make the distinction. So a group home is is for those or persons that are disabled. And there's actually protections in federal law. And there's actually protections in federal law on those. So we we can't use zoning to prohibit a group home. But again, in those case, they cases, they have to be licensed by the state. And again, it's it's reserved for persons with a disability. A boarding home is different in that we do prohibit those. And that it's it's basically, so these are situations that aren't licensed like a like a disabled type group home situation where people are renting out a home by the room. So our code prohibits that. The challenge on enforcement is, as we just talked, is is finding evidence, right? So we have to, and and typical evidence, we found some of the common examples have been we'll find, say, an ad on Facebook where they they say, hey, we rent by the room. We use that. And when we go to, if it goes to Ace Court, we use that as our evidence to say this is a boarding house. Or we found some in some places where people in the property listing, they they'll basically describe it as a boarding house in the property listing when they're selling the house. So we'll use that. Less common will have someone that will submit a building permit and whether converting all of the living space into rooms and going, hmm, sort of looks like a boarding house, right? So there there there's things like that. What we've, what's been challenging is we've had some complaints where people say, hey, we like this as a boarding house. But when we search online, we look at, you know, county records, old real estate listings, we just, we can't find any kind of a smoking gun or any evidence to support that. So that's been our challenge. So we we have been successful in enforcing, in some cases, where we do find evidence. Others is just, the tough part is finding the evidence. And then I know we also talked about parking. So the council over the years has had many discussions and I I sent a few examples of this, but even even before, you know, the the examples I gave, where there was discussions about, you know, maybe we ought to either limit or even prohibit on-street parking in residential areas as a way of of limiting how many cars people can have, right? So we we explored the possibility of doing like a permitting system. So some cities actually require, if you're gonna park on the street, you have to have a permit to park on the street. And so and there's different ways of administering that. Or in some cases, just saying no parking just outright. Of course, some of the challenges associated with that is just enforcement. I know our our parking enforcement guys are already super busy with what they're doing. But 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 there are cities that do for for various reasons. Now, oftentimes, the reason why cities would restrict parking is, let's say, you know, as an example, you have a neighborhood right next to a sports arena, right? And so to avoid paying for parking, people will just spill out into the neighborhood. So they'll they'll do a permit system there so that only residents get a permit as an example. That's a pretty common scenario to but I'm sure there's other reasons why they've they would have parking restrictions. But anyway, long story short, councils had a lot of discussions about this in the past, but at least previous councils have just have not chosen to to do kind of broad parking restrictions. There have been a few cases where we've done sort of targeted, limited. So I'm thinking of, if you're familiar with the the McDonald's and the Maverick on Fifty Four Hundred South and Fifty Six Hundred West, developing, we did some parking restrictions. Also, over by the pinnacle at Highbury Apartments, we did some parking restrictions by the elementary school there. Because there were just, people would park all up and down the street and with kids, we were just worried about that situation. So there's been a handful of cases where we've done targeted, no parking, but it's pretty limited.
Do we have a limit of people that are allowed in a group home?
Oh, that I'd have to look up. I I think that might be regulated by the state in terms of how many people. I I see the chief shaking his head. So, yeah, that would be something the state regulates.
Probably by square feet.
I think so.
I'd love some good ideas. Not that you haven't discussed this before, but man, it's really a challenge. I I would I would it would help in some cases to prohibit overnight parking.
On street?
On street, because then if they're there full time, they they have to contain all their parking, all their cars. Highbury, probably that wouldn't work because so many of them park on city streets.
But they have internal parking. They just choose not to pay for it. So they have the onsite parking. So if we did enforce it, it wouldn't be a people wouldn't have to move out or sell cars.
And I know the council.
Have garages.
The council talked once about only letting people park on one side of the street or the other. I don't think that's the way to go. I think they're just gonna go to the the side that's allowed and upset the people on that side of the road. Thought about it. I think the only thing, well, the only I've come up with is no overnight parking. Limit the number of cars, but playing ours.
Well, that that would cause a problem for my family. I mean, I have adult children who live at home and there's not enough room in our driveway for a car for each of our kids, which they each have one. So. If you move to West Jordan.
I've got adult kids too.
You have a big driveway, though.
And I have a neighbor that was very creative. So they have their driveway and then they had that the side yard and they poured concrete. And then three cars are on an angle up there and then two in the garage. So they just got creative because they have adult children with cars as well. So they have five cars in that on that piece of property.
And we've even seen some people get, I I wouldn't say creative, but they've actually paved almost the entire backyard and.
Oh, backyard.
Yes. Yeah, well, they'll put it in parking in the backyard too. So 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 that's because the code doesn't prohibit that. Right now, you can you can use the entire backyard for parking. No. So in some ways, it might be pushing people to do that unless we were to regulate that too.
Yeah, it might be some unintended.
But at least they're self-contained and they're not being a hazard for the neighbors as they take them past the street. It's not an easy problem to solve.
Agree. I agree.
And once we saw that, then there'll be ways to get around it.
Well, but that doesn't mean we don't try.
I I know. For a boarding house, if they have a business license, right?
Well, they, right now, you're just not allowed. So they couldn't get a business license to do one because we just. So, yeah, group group home would be a license, but a boarding home, you you can't get a license for.
And you can get a business license for a house that you rent out the top and the bottom?
No. So.
Did you have to live in the house to rent out the bottom?
Correct. And I know this this gets, and if it's helpful, we we did a couple of years ago, we did a kind of a one-page plus, I think, summary of different scenarios and what's legal and what's not. We could send that back out if that's helpful for the council. But so a couple of years ago, the state changed or passed a law that allowed what they call accessory dwelling units or mother-in-law apartments, some people refer to them as, where cities pretty much had to allow them in single-family residential zones with some limitations. So what we did is we said, if if a property is west of Fortieth West, you can have an ADU. And the reason we did west of Fortieth is because we already, most of our apartments are already on the east side of the of the city. So we were trying to kind of spread it out a little bit. So if a home is west of Fortieth, you can have a scenario where the owner, you know, lives in the house, but then rents a portion of their house as a as a accessory apartment. Okay, that's the that's the only scenario where they can do that in a single-family scenario. Now, we do have some duplex zones where they can, you can have an investor that owns, you know, the unit, rents the upstairs and the downstairs. But that's really the only scenario where you can have the two rental units and an investor. So again, the in the case where it's the owner lives there, they can, say, rent out the basement if they get they have a license and they get approval to have an accessory dwelling unit. So there's certain building codes they have to meet and and other regulations we have in our zoning ordinance.
And they have to have off-street parking.
Correct.
That's associated with that unit.
Right, yeah. The state allowed us to acquire one additional space, but not more than that. So they they were pretty restrictive about what we could regulate when it comes to that additional unit.
Okay, so I think Nicole made a note to resend out that spreadsheet. So is there any other information you'd like? Or do you want to revisit?
Is there, I I'm, I don't have ideas, but is there appetite? Should there come an idea like banning overnight parking or something like that, or one side of the street or something like that? Is there appetite for piloting somewhere? Is that feasible? I know that would necessitate changing enforcement, right? Because we don't have people doing twenty-four-hour enforcement now. We would have to do that if we were looking at that overnight. But I mean, to be accountable to people who have these issues and we've all driven down streets in our neighborhoods where plow or ambulance would probably have a tough time coming through at certain times of the night. Piloting something, if there came a good idea that we could all agree on, at least testing, is that so? Do we have precedence for doing that?
Not that I can think of, but if the council were to choose that, I actually have a neighborhood in mind. Seriously, because we we've received a number of complaints about boarding homes, but again, the evidence is is really lacking. And and actually, one of the residents said, hey, can we do something on parking? And and so so the answer is yes, but again, that would be something the council would need to provide that direction.
Is there enough appetite for that?
I think there is some.
Show we're trying to do something anyway.
We may try and feel, but yeah, we're trying to address it.
Yeah. Okay.
No, no other cities out there that have a magic bullet on this?
That I know of.
Well, we thought we had over on Thirty First when we did the no parking on either side there by the trailer court. Till I was into my barber a few months back and he says, yeah, you moved all off Thirty First, they're now all at my parking lot. So.
But they have the park has allowed them to park on the side roads and they are parking a lot more inside.
A lot more inside, but yeah, right. The first thing you solve, moved over to his parking lot.
Thirty First is way better now, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
So much safer.
Lot safer.
Improved for sure.
He ran in health problems and retired anyway, so.
So it sounds like there's an appetite to try it. So.
Would the council like a preview on the area we're thinking first before we do that?
Yes, that'd be good. Get a profile, then look at some ideas of what we might want to pilot. And find out what resources that will require from the city as well.
Yeah, we'll we'll go back to the or put together a kind of a proposal and then come back to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I've done.
House you wanted to discuss.
I should have more questions.
Just a curious curiosity question about impact fees. So I know, I mean, local governments, obviously, we do that. Are there any other entities that would be like school districts or tax?
So mainly water and sewer districts. So and in some cases, the city is the water and sewer district. But yeah, they they charge like connection fees, which are basically impact fees.
And they're based on square footage?
What they usually, well, in the case of like a commercial building, we usually base it on square footage. In the case of residence, it's a private unit. So depends on the the type or the use.
Well, their impact fee is by the size of the supply.
For water.
For water. Yeah, the water is the size of the hookup.
Yeah, the ERU's residential equivalents basically is what they they use. Yeah.
So if you put in a three-quarter, you're fine. If you put in a five-inch, you're gonna pay a lot of money. Yeah. Yeah, even a two-inch is quite expensive.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. It is that time of year for our ethics training, open meetings and everything else. So we'll turn the time over to Mr. Bunderson.
Thank you. It is really difficult to follow two charismatic and competent men in Brandon Hill and Steve Pastrick. And I would say maybe I could deflect with humor, but they're actually both funnier than me as well. So we'll just dig into how all great ideas start, which which is with the Greeks and the Romans and then on through Bob Dylan. So the idea that I want to present to you tonight is the seven deadly sins and the seven deadly sins of municipal ethics, as it were. And of course, the seven deadly sins of lust, gluttony, greed, sloth, wrath, envy and pride. Started with the Greeks and the Romans as as virtues and vices were whittled down by some monks, were eliminated to seven by a pope and sailed along pretty much untouched until nineteen ninety, when the Traveling Wilburys released their great volume three album after Roy Orbison died. And they had a song on there called Seven Deadly Sins. They weren't the same as the ones that the that the Pope had written down so long ago. But it kind of gave me the inspiration that we can play with this idea a little. So as I give this presentation, we're going to talk about these seven deadly municipal sins. And I'm going to illustrate it with some creepy AI art as usual. So the first, the first deadly sin, and this actually tracks with the real ones, is lust. And here we want to talk about sexual harassment. The the city has a very strong policy and a very strong training program. Training our employees how to not sexually harass, obviously, but also how to report it and the procedures on how to report it. We teach them about the quid pro quo, about the hostile work environments and about the actual assaults and unwanted touchings. Our HR department and legal department working together has a very quick response team. We get a, when you get a complaint where we we always take definitive action. And we let the parties know as much as we legally can on both sides, one that you're being investigated and for the other that we are investigating and that we're that that we interview everyone that we need to and write a report up and and take whatever action is necessary. So the other thing that we train, when we train our employees, is how to how to report this if it is a supervisor. And so if it is a supervisor, we train them, they can come to HR, they can go over their supervisor, they're protected when they do that in in that action. And we will protect those employees as much as as we legally can when 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 they do have to report a supervisor for that. And so that is the sexual harassment policy. Now, the 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 tricky part is sometimes we have these outlier cases where maybe we have an employer, employee being harassed by other entities and things like that. And we have to really work hard for those special cases. And when they do come up, we also address those. And we figure out ways how to handle that problem as well, whether that's having the employee not make that contact anymore or, you know, not allowing people in certain places, just whatever, whatever it is, we we handle that as well. That also applies frankly to us as executive staff. And what we would ask is if there were that extraordinary circumstance where someone on executive staff needed to report something, we hope it never happens, but needed to report something, that executive staff member would need to come to the council and and the council would need to provide those protections like we provide protections to our employees. So there we go. These next one come in doubles. Uh, the next municipal sin, if you will, is the use of your office per, per personal benefit. And uh, what is prohibited here is using confidential information that you receive through your job uh, to benefit yourself or others. Um, using your official position to try to get money or favors for yourself or others. And accepting gifts over the uh, amount of fifty dollars. Now you can't accept any cash, but non-cash gifts over fifty dollars are also prohibited with a few um, exceptions that we don't really like to teach because we don't want to get into those exceptions. We just like to say, just don't accept gifts over fifty dollars and you'll be safe. The next sin, number three, is not disclosing compensation for assistance in a transaction involving the city. So what we're saying here is that you can't receive compensation for assisting another entity in any transaction with the city. Unless you file a sworn statement with the mayor, disclose that conflict to your supervisor and disclose that to anyone who might be involved in the transaction. You have to do that disclosure ten days prior to the transaction or ten days before you get paid. And that disclosure has to be available to the public for examination. Stop me if you have any questions. Um, number four, not disclosing an interest in a business regulated by the city. This is the idea that if you own ten percent or more of a business that is regulated by the city, you have to disclose that. So if you own, if
That means located in the city, correct?
Correct.
Anything located in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because we would regulate everything that is located in the city.
Business license or other things.
And that, yeah, that's exactly right. And that's a good question, Mayor. Any, anytime that we would require a business license anywhere from a rental to an Airbnb or anything like that, um, you are required to disclose that. And again, that's in a sworn statement to the mayor. Number five, not disclosing the interest in a business entity that's doing business with the cities. Now, this is a little different. This is uh, and so the one before was regulated by the city. This one is not disclosing an interest in a business entity doing business with the city. So if we are um, if we are, if we have a business interest, if I have a business interest in a T-shirt company that is selling T-shirts to the city for uh, for any of our, you know, for parks or something like that. While that meeting is happening, I have to, I have to make that disclosure on the record. So while you are approving that resolution, say for my T-shirt company, if I have a business interest in that business, I have to make that disclosure in public on the record.
Does that also have to be on the form?
Um, yeah, there will, yeah, we'll do the, that same form and that's an additional. Yes, that's right, Mayor. That's an additional um, part is you have to disclose that.
Should that situation involve a sitting council member? They wouldn't necessarily have to recuse themselves from voting. As long as they've disclosed.
That's right. Yeah. Yeah. It's, you raise a very good point. Yes. Um, no, there are very, very few instances, none that I've seen, but I don't want to say there are none that would require a council member to actually recuse themselves. Um, what the law has really con, what I've always said and what I've always told you guys is, is you can do all these things because this law is sort of designed around the, the rural Utah three-county commissioner. And the only person who can do this thing in this county is my son-in-law. It's designed around that. So the idea is as long as you disclose, all this stuff is okay. The next one is failing to disclose a conflict between your personal interests and your public duties. Now, this is sort of a vague, vague one and um, a little broader than the ones we've talked about. But um, if there are any issues and we tell the employee group this too, if you have any questions about what your personal interests versus your public duties are, please come talk to us. We are happy in the, in the legal department, Brandon and I, to answer any questions about um, about what that means and how to do that. Um, again, in this case, you would disclose that in a public meeting. So the, the final sin is wrath. And I will use wrath to illustrate the punishments for violating uh, these uh, in these codes. Um, and there's, there's two main punishments. And it, it goes back and forth between the things that we just talked about. But in everyone, the one of the punishments is you shall dismiss the employee. Now that's a little harder if it's a member of the council. It still says shall dismiss. We're not sure how to do that. Um, but certainly if you're an employee, uh, it says you shall dismiss them. And then there are criminal penalties involved in a couple of these things. And the criminal penalties are very, very steep. So it starts at a, at a misdemeanor, but if the transaction is um, over a thousand dollars, it raises it all the way up to the level of a second degree felony. Uh, that is the same as some pretty serious crimes uh, that our police officers work with and that uh, the district attorney prosecutes. So that's that, those are some pretty serious consequences for violations of this, of this uh, ethics act. Um, in certain circumstances, you also void contracts uh, that have been made with, with entities. Um, that's also a solution, but that's a may, not a shall. So that is uh, that is it in a nutshell. Uh, any questions? Thank you very much.
It amazes me every year how you make this a little bit different. So we pay attention.
It helps me too.
All right. We'll go to our council calendar. That's not loaded. So we won't worry about that. Not online. I don't know anybody else. Okay. So we'll move on to our potential future agenda items. And in my brain, I have a, I have something on my phone, but um, anybody else have anything? Well, I look. Yes.
Uh, I was just curious if the council would entertain a discussion about use of uh, s, public city buildings. Uh, the reason is back in October, I had the leader of a local boy scout troop ask for space to hold weekly meetings. There was some concern about that mainly, um, you know, where and for how long and and also would employees be available to keep an eye out. So with that, I know that when we came in for our strategic planning meeting, there was a sign that for community group to use this space. And if, if there's a policy regarding what community groups, um, and visit that and just make sure it makes sense still.
Okay. I bring that back and send communication.
Yep, sure can do that.
My phone is blank. So anybody else? Okay. Not seeing you. We'll move on to council reports.
Just a, a follow-up from Brandon, with Brandon. Last Saturday, the Chamber of Commerce had their last legislative roundup. In the past, these have been heavily attended by legislators and that, so they can get their word out to us and that. Last Saturday, we had one Senator, Senator Fillmore. You know, usually the west side is pretty well represented, but he was the only one. Senator McKay came in about halfway through and answered a few questions, but I think the legislature itself is looking at winding down very quickly. So you know that, yes, we wanted to buy what you mentioned is one that we really need to get a, a hold of. I know our staff is doing the best they can, but I think have a it was voted out by a certain amount over the objections of the counties and the cities. So I don't know how much they listen, but that's it. Like that was the only thing I wanted to do is we try to represent us. I already knew Senator McKay's feeling on the Maverick Center. I talked to him about that before.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Um, we do not have any proposed session. Okay. So just have one more action item. Yes, thank you. You paused for too long. So all of the everyone say aye. And we stand adjourned. See you at six thirty.
Yeah, Peyton, my motion will be on there now. I just had to push it through a little.